All right, I'm going to call this study session to order today. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And we welcome you. I am going to turn now for our purpose and agenda to Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Our purpose in study sessions is to share information and make sure board members have all the information that they need for efficient and effective decision-making at the board table. This evening, we will continue our focus on the oversight of operations with an update on our strategic, one of our strategic directions, dealing with Eastem. So we have a team who has been leading another team all year on this work, and they'll share an update with us. We'll also have a brief staffing and enrollment update. I'll share some information about the process of the superintendent evaluation. Then we'll move into a little bit of policy. We do have one policy review up front in the agenda, a little bit out of place, but we wanted to honor some of our administrators' time, so we put that a little bit earlier in the agenda.
Great, thank you. Now, we'll take a minute to just review district governance and policy as we do at every study session, and this just tracks how we're getting through the year and attending to our district strategic directions and goals. Tonight, we will be discussing several district policies again: 400s, 500s, 600s, 700s, 800s, and 900s. We will also be getting an update in terms of operational oversight on our Eastem focus to continue to provide effective environmental education in science, technology, engineering, and math. And under superintendent relations, we are taking steps to employ the next PLSAS superintendent. And tonight, we'll be discussing the timeline for the superintendent evaluation and what that timeline looks like and what the next steps are. And that's it. All right, so first up tonight, we have our annual wellness policy review with Jamie Anderson.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, and Superintendent Stallow. Included in your board packet tonight is our student wellness policy, policy number 514. This policy is overseen by our district's student wellness committee, which falls under the child nutrition services department. No changes have been made to the policy this year, so therefore, no board action is required or requested. Questions?
Do you have any questions or comments on this policy? And this will come forward again for a few more readings then, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, under strategic direction number four, integrating an Eastem focus across the district, we have a few presenters this evening. It looks like Sarah Huffman and Patrick Lynn are the other two presenting with you this evening. LeAnn or, oh, Jamie. Well, I just had to see your name on there. I apologize. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thanks again for having us, all of you. Good evening, once again. So we are here to present our priority work strategic direction number four. As you all are very familiar with this graphic, this is our work for the district, our core values, the vision, and then the list of our strategic directions. So we are kind of towards the bottom, integrate Eastem focus across the district. Our priority work, so the goal of this strategic direction this year was to develop a comprehensive Eastem framework to ensure common understanding of our Eastem identity, to provide effective, sustainable, environmental education in science, technology, engineering, and math. As previously noted by Chair Nelson, contributors for this committee were Patrick Lynn, Principal at Jeffers Pond, Sarah Huffman, Secondary Curriculum Specialist, LeAnn Wirek, who is the Director of Community Education, and then myself, Assistant Director of Child Nutrition Services.
LeAnn wasn't able to join us this evening, but she was a huge contributor to this presentation. I want to give her a huge shout-out because we're going to talk about it.
Okay, thanks.
We have four deliverables that we focused on. Number one was to complete a thorough review and collection of historical documentation of Prior Lake Savage Area schools, create a historical timeline of that journey, draft a working Eastem framework, which we've done, and establish some interruptions when that journey is completed. Throughout this collection of historical documentation, we really focused in on the things that our district is up to. Partnerships, anything that we could get our hands on in this committee, and we're a new committee, we don't...
Turn the mic on. There we go.
Just start all over, please.
We took and relied on LeAnn. She really helped us, and we used other people that have been a part of this PDSA in the past. We took that data and that historical documentation, we put it together chronologically in a timeline that organized it, and we don't have that here for you today, but it is on, it's in a database that we put together for the district to share in the future if need be. We also conducted some interviews with past and current PLSAS Eastem collaborators, teachers, people tied to the district. We gathered some perspective so that, to make sure that we were collecting the right data in the timeline. Number two was to put the timeline together, and I'm going to share that with you now. We're going to start all the way back in 1975, when this district went to Wilfrid GLC for the first time. I'm so happy to report that this year, beginning next year, we're going back with our fifth graders for that experience. We're really looking forward to that at the elementary level. We have a little gap there between '75 and 2004, and I'm going to point out a few things here. So in 2004, the district strategic plan first reflects development of natural areas and participation and ecological service opportunities. That's the first time on the district strategic plan we see kind of EE start to come alive. That's an important step. Oh, four, the Fab Lab opens. In '05, the Jeffers Foundation provides a grant for district naturalists. We have outdoor classrooms that start, that blossom at Five Hawks. There's a partnership between the city and Jeffers Pond area with the park. Robotics comes in in '06. And then in '07, environmental education becomes a part of the district strategic plan officially. So those are two marker points as we go. In 2009, we have the partnership with Three Rivers, and that's where they support all of the environmental ed festivals that happen at the elementary schools. In '10, the EE clubs start to blossom. In 2012, the school board approves identifying elementary schools as E Eastem schools, and that's an important piece, too, because that starts to really change. We have a little bit of a change that starts to happen there. Our green ribbon work happens, nature-based preschool launches. We've got, in 2015, then the strategic plan direction transitions from EE to Eastem. Coding happens in 2017, school gardens come up, maker spaces start to become part of our schools, especially at the elementary level. And then we did some auditing in 2019, right before the pandemic happened. Now, we don't have everything on this timeline. Our database was much fuller than this, but we went and just tried to identify the highlights as we went. We were trying to educate ourselves so that we could move forward. Now, we know, our findings say that we have a rich history of environmental ed and Eastem practices in our district. One of the things we learned throughout our journey is that we do have a bit of an inconsistent understanding of what Eastem should be and how it is currently applied in our district. We found that as well, and I want to share a couple of examples of that. In some of the conversations that we've done at the, at the elementary level, for example, some people think that Eastem still is just environmental ed. They haven't separated that quite, quite, quite the same. We also think that Eastem, there's a little bit of, some conversation around that, just means outdoor education. It means just teaching outdoors. It's, it's greater than that. A perfect example, I know at the elementary level, is the Jiggle Bots project. Jiggle Bots are when we take recycled materials, either from home or from school, from the environment, and we use them in an engineering process to get things that create bots to move. They give a motor to them, and they show how that engineering process works. So we take environmental things and we tie them into the engineering process. That's a fun example that happens at the elementary level. We began then drafting an Eastem framework.
So this is the draft that we developed based on research from the Hanover Research Group, as well as conversations with elementary and secondary teachers who've been involved in Eastem in the district. The idea of this framework is to define what Eastem is, to shift practice from what it's The framework is, this is just a start. In our conversations with the teachers, we believe that we do need to do some revising of this to make it more, on the two side, to make it a little bit more clear about the Eastem. A lot of what you see on the two side is good teaching practices, and Eastem is good teaching practices, but we'd like to make it clearer for teachers what that means in the context of the environment, science, technology, engineering, and math.
Yeah, we talked about kind of as a filter. The framework would help create us a more defined filter to help us make some decisions. So we're looking at '22 and '23 and beyond. We would like to establish a working group of teachers and administrators to help refine Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' shared understanding of Eastem in the district-wide draft framework to demonstrate the following. Number one, we need consistent messaging and understanding of the district's definition of Eastem. We believe that we need a connection to grade-level curriculum and standards at a level that we don't have quite yet. We would like more concrete examples in each category of Eastem. We would like deliberate consideration of Eastem in the curriculum process review to help strengthen that and develop a rubric to measure Eastem integration across D-12. And then, for the following year, maybe incorporate Eastem, an Eastem goal into each of our building's school improvement plans, maybe at the district level as well. We don't have that right now. And then investigate learning models that would allow Eastem to thrive within our schools and bring relevance to our local community and global society. Dr. Stallow, you wrote in the newspaper just recently, "Eastem is here to stay. We want to help make it stay. We want to make it more robust." Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Mary.
So we've been saying, we've been Eastem since I can remember, and that's fine. I really like the framework that was put together. What would, what would cause us to, and I'm not saying, you know, putting together the focus groups and stuff like that, what if there was just, you know, a common mission statement put out there and saying, okay, projects need to satisfy this, or integrated learning and STEM need to satisfy this criteria in order to help kind of boost this a little bit more forward so that you're, as you're determining the, like that, you know, with your, with your individual focus groups, as you're determining how to evolve it, you're actually practicing it simultaneously along that framework guideline, so you can see what works, what doesn't work, what common denominators are there, what the learning outcomes are, et cetera. So we're, we're moving it ahead a little bit faster. And when I prefaced my question on, you know, we've been saying this for a long time, I'm kind of like, I, I know that even, and my feedback on strategic directions for years previous was, there's no, there's no concrete measurement, there's no concrete definition. We've had in our strategic direction year over year, since I've been on the board and even before then. So can we do something to kind of push this forward faster in a little bit more integrated format, understanding that it's going to, no matter what, it's going to be an evolving thing? What I'm worried about is when you talk about establishing the direction for '22, '23, and beyond, and '21, '22, and all that kind of stuff, is that we, we still keep kicking it down the, down the road. And I'm wondering, how do we solidify it and get it to be that working model as fast as possible?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you're, all the points that you made are right on and kind of in alignment with what we felt as a committee. I think that we needed to, we were almost putting the horse before the cart, and we needed to take a step back and really see, like, where have we been on our, you know, Eastem journey? Where did we start? What have we been doing? And we found that it's been, people have been doing this for a long time, and so trying to get everybody on board and understanding, like, this is really what Eastem is, because there is still some confusion with that. And so, you know, discovering that piece of information, creating kind of our draft framework. We've talked to a lot of teachers, a lot of experts in this field, more so than the three of us, and just trying to get a really good idea, like, this is really what it is. It's inquiry-based learning. So, you know, moving forward for next year, bringing that, you know, to a working group that, again, of experts that know more about how to adopt this into the classroom and make it more a systematic approach, so everybody understands what it is. It's not one more thing to add to their list, but really, it is, as Sarah pointed out, just good teaching practices. So creating that group, coming up with some really concrete examples for teachers, some really good ideas, some projects that they can apply right away, or things like, oh, I've actually been doing Eastem, and I didn't even realize it. And then building it into department and schools, skips and DCIPs, you know, would be that final kind of evaluative measure, you know? This is our goal. Did we fulfill it this year?
Can I just add one more thing? I, you know, and first of all, kudos to everyone working on this. I know that one of the challenges is Minnesota is one of the few states in the Union that doesn't have a definition for STEM, even though that we put it into a lot of our standards and things like that. One of the reasons why we tend to get ranked lower in the 50 states, sometimes the lowest, is because, not because we're not doing it, but because there really isn't any common definition across our state, and the common definition of how to fund it, how to measure it, stuff like that. Everyone's kind of gone on their own, and there's been a lot of progress that way. But are we working also with other school districts or other groups within our own, let's say, or cohort within the state to try and come up with lessons learned from other school districts also?
I mean, I, I think that that's definitely part of the next step, Ms. France. We are a committee of four. We know that there's lots of people that have a great voice in our district that can help drive this. We need to get in front of them. We need the teachers involved in this. We need to hammer out the framework so it's agreed upon and makes sense for our district, because the four of us put that together as a draft, as like, here, here's our, here's our beginning. And I think we could accelerate that timeline after we are able to get people in our district together to look at that.
And by the way, four of you is not enough. I get that. It's a lot of work. I, I'm totally on board with the fact that you guys have done a tremendous amount of work, so, for such a small team and such a big task, so thank you.
And I think it's not the size of the group so much as making sure that those teachers who have been incorporating Eastem practices throughout, you know, since 1975, have a chance to help us shape more what that means for us. Patrick and, Patrick referenced some of the really great projects that we do, and Jamie mentioned that it's, Eastem is more about an inquiry-based approach to learning. And I think what we want to do is take it out of these really great projects, and there are really great projects, you know, E through 12 that are, that are happening that are Eastem, and with the framework, put that together with those instructional practices to make it a consistent practice throughout the district. And I think you're right, the definition, defining it becomes critical, and also working with those teachers who, who have that strong background and passion to make sure that it is implementable in our classrooms.
I think the, the piece that you talked about, instructionally, is something to continue to work on. You know, in terms of the metrics, you know, we've had, on our scorecard, we've had metrics about recycling. We've had metrics, I know in some of the survey questions, teachers saying, I, I integrate Eastem into my classroom, so assessing our teachers and the implementation of that. I think in the years that we were working on the Green Ribbon Award, there were three themes primarily that we were aligning things to. But I think, I think part of, there's been amazing things, as you said, happening, introducing coding into kindergarten. So again, that was a metric one year that we took a look at, because on our balanced scorecard, right, we have metrics aligned to each of those strategic directions. But there are some process things and not some student outcome things, so I think it will be interesting to continue to determine, right, what are, what are the metrics that we want to use to say we are an Eastem district? I know that identity matters to our staff, to our families and community, and actually, today, as we were engaged in interviews for our new principal at Hamilton Ridge Elementary, one of the reasons candidates almost unanimously said they wanted to join Prior Lake Savage Area Schools was because of the Eastem identity work and commitment that the board and the district has been doing to it.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank you for putting this together. I think, just as someone that's kind of watched it grow from the very beginning, I believe I was a part of the vote to make the district Eastem, I think it's really important. It is a lot of our identity, and to be able to have a framework where we can see that collective work and where everything fits, and to have people's voice in on that, I think is critical for us to move it forward. There's a lot of passion around it, and I do think it's something that we pride ourselves on, and it is really part of our identity, and this will kind of ensure that it will be that moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have an enrollment and staffing update with Director of Business Services Julie Sink and Executive Director of Administrative Services Jim Quorum.
Good evening. I just want to give you a quick update on how the enrollment is going. I looked back at where we were at this time last year, and we're almost in the exact same spot. We're about 185 students short of our budgeted goal, so it's very similar to last year. Kindergarten is about 60 short, and so we're still looking for more students, but it is April, and so we have some time yet to have those students enroll into our district, yes.
Clarify, so out of the 185, 60 are kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
Okay.
And the rest is, the rest of the elementary is on track, per what we have put out for a budget, I will say, a budgeted enrollment, but we are short in both the middle school and the high school.
So mine would be somewhat uneventful update, then, based upon her enrollment. We, you know, we're, we're filling positions that are open based upon retirements or resignations, that sort of thing. A little bit of shifting around, as you know, we approved some, moving some FTE to EL and other places where positions were cut to make that happen, but overall, FTEs at this point, we're, we would be bringing no changes forward at this point. We continue to look at some ancillary licensed areas. We're meeting on specialists tomorrow. What's, what are their schedules look like? So we're, we're still working the schedules, but as far as overall FTEs, I don't see a change right now based upon what Julie has reported, and we'll continue to watch the numbers.
So as things happen and change, if numbers creep up, as they sometimes do over the summer and things, would you look to, like, wait till August, or would you, along the way, if we needed to hire more? I mean, just kind of...
Yeah, I mean, we continue to look at, you know, my sort of rule of thumb is every two weeks is where we draw a line as we go through the summer, and we say, okay, right now, today, what does this look like? Does this warrant it? And then we have conversations about that, and then pull the principals in at that time if, if it looks like it is, to figure out how we might need to move things around.
Okay. But as for now, we're staying where, what we're at.
Right now, we have done nothing different. We're just staying status quo based upon the line we drew at the April board meeting.
Yep, okay.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you for that update. Next up is superintendent evaluation for the 2021-22 school year.
Thank you very much. Good morning, board members. Thank you, Martha, for helping me with that. As you know, my work and goals can only be accomplished with the amazing leadership and collaborative effort of not only the admin team, as you saw here tonight, but also our, our overall staff who work collaboratively each day on behalf of students. I'm ultimately responsible for district outcomes, and because of my belief in practices and shared leadership, I'll make sure that we all have ownership in the work in order to serve students best. And although this is the superintendent's evaluation process, I know that I don't achieve anything alone, and I think this year, as we think about our district theme with we are PLSAS All In, with leaders, with school board members, staff, and families all around me, we have collectively achieved some amazing things. Through both the challenges and the celebrations of this year, I just want to express my gratitude to the board, to all of our staff and administrators who have worked tirelessly on behalf of both the school district goals that are outlined in our operational plan, as well as the other work that happens each and every day. So tonight, I'm primarily sharing with you the process, and then you'll have materials that you'll be able to review in the upcoming days, as you see on the timeline in front of you. While the timeline is showing beginning tonight, obviously, the work of these goals and the continuous improvement process from our district happened well over a year ago, as we were closing up a year, and then look at recommendations to set goals and operational plans for the following year, and these things have all been in operation all year long. So again, you'll review materials. You'll be getting a link tomorrow morning, I believe, from HR, come from Jim Quorum, which ultimately will allow you an opportunity to assess the leadership characteristics in my job description, as well as the review of the end-of-the-year priority work. And then you can see the rest of the timeline there. Thanks, Martha. I just wanted to remind, I know you've seen this 1,000 times, and I hope that you've got it in your memory, because it really matters with how we align all of the continuous improvement work that we do in our school district. One of the things that's always been really important to me is that every single one of our employees sees themselves in our strategic plan and in the continuous improvement efforts so that they recognize their role in bringing to life our mission, which is to educate all learners, to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. So you can see up here, I'm just going to review this really quickly for you, but that area in green really represents the direction of our school district and the school board oversight and monitoring. So the next slide shows one of those components, and that green area of that visual, obviously, is our strategic plan, which calls out our mission, our values, our vision, and ultimately, those strategic directions. And the strategic directions are so important in this work because that's our improvement theory. We're saying if we continue to set goals and do priority work in each of those six areas, our belief is that that mission is going to come to life for each one of our students, as is our vision. So that's why the importance of constantly remembering the strategic directions, that's how we align our district goals. The next two slides, this is the work that each summer, with the board executive team, we take a look at and say, okay, in alignment to the school districts or the school board's roles, what then are your priorities aligned to those school, those school district priorities? So the five primary responsibilities of the board, you can see on this sheet, are the district policy, operational oversight, and then on the next slide, board self-governance, superintendent relations, and public engagement. I love how the board chair, each study session, reminds us and our public that all of the work that you do is aligned to those five areas, and calls out specifically, each night, as you did tonight, Chair, what specifically tonight are we going to be doing? What is the business of the board aligned to the school district's working document? I think it's really important that the community understands the constant alignment. Everything that we do is in that visual of our district's school improvement plan. The next piece on that, and we were just talking a little bit about this, is the district balance scorecard. This has been an evolution in the seven years that I've been here, and it's not yet where we want it to be. It's one of the reasons I think it's so important that student education is going to be partnering with us, beginning now into next year. In hindsight, it's probably something we should have done years ago, is bring some expertise and, and additional support around the work of saying, what are metrics aligned each of those strategic directions that we really want to take a look at? And what are the benchmark districts? I think that's one of the best things that's going to come from this. You know, we compare ourselves to other districts when we look at student achievement, when we look at utility use, when we look at things like that, and I think it's going to be really beneficial, especially around the survey, because we have a lot of measures on our scorecard right now with that engagement, with the social-emotional learning aspects and some of those things. I think it'll be really important to have, have some of those benchmarks, which will help us continue to, I'm just going to say one more thing about the balance scorecard, because I think this is really important. No one measure can tell the worth of a child. No one measure can tell the worth and the importance of a school district. That's why a balanced scorecard matters. That's why it matters that we look at the academic needs of each of our students and where their growth is and where their proficiency is on measures far beyond MCAs. Again, it's really hard to look at an average of MCAs when we know that fewer, more students are opting out of that. So I think it's just really important that we are constantly looking at what makes the most sense so that we can identify the growth and proficiency of each student. The next slide then talks about that priority work, and that's where we set those goals and align that to each of the strategic directions. Tomorrow, our administrative team will begin the process, because in the packet that you'll get are the end-of-the-year reports. because in the packet that you'll get are the end of the year reports on each one of these strategic directions, these priority works, these district goals, which make up our operational plan. And each team has come up with the recommendations as they move forward for next year. But what we'll have to do over the course of the next month is turn those recommendations into those goal statements. And then they'll begin the action plan for the following year, but that will be the work that we do over the next couple of weeks and then bring that to you as recommendations moving forward. So the next area of the district continuous improvement plan is in that orange area, which is the priority work that I was just calling out. So the next slide looks very familiar to you. Again, these are the approved district goals. And then I also wanted to remind you that we also have aligned over the last three years the nine strategies from Reimagine Minnesota, the work of the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, 50 metro districts have been working on and sharing information with one another over the last several years. So the light blue at the end of each of those statements outlines that Reimagine Minnesota strategy. And then you'll see, and this is going to be part of what you review tonight, for each of those areas, you'll get an overview of work that's been done, accomplishments, the team, the summary, as well as the recommendations moving forward. And then you'll also see that, again, just kind of a continuation of what you'll be reviewing. What I also added this year is, in addition to our district priority work, I felt like there were four other areas that I spent a lot of my time as a leader and our team spent a lot of time. So I called that out at the beginning of this end of the year report. The first of those is COVID-19. While we're certainly in a different place right now than we were last year at this time or than we were when we started the year, it's still been an intensive part, especially this fall, of what we did. The second area that I spoke to and reflected on is the technology levy. Again, when you think of where we were from July 1 through November and then the planning that had to happen after November and the failed technology levy for how we were going to continue to be able to provide equitable access to technology to our students has been very time-intensive for some of our leaders. I also wanted to speak a little bit about the restructure in our leadership team because of the reduction of the assistant superintendent last year and what that's meant for me as a leader and what that's meant for other team members. And then I also wanted to call out some of the work, and again, it aligns with our priority work around educational equity and excellence, but the significant time and energy that we've all spent on ensuring the racial harm incidents that our school district has been faced with, that we have acted appropriately, swiftly, deeply, and have used that to continue to improve our work and make the lived experiences for all of our students better. So I called that out in the end of the year report, which you'll also see. And then lastly, that, or not lastly, but the dark blue area, again, that really speaks to our department continuous improvement plans and our school continuous improvement plans. Three times a year, I formally meet with our leaders and we review, we can go to the next slide. Thanks. I meet with our leaders and take a look first at their goals and where their school improvement plans start. We look at interim data at mid-year and that's when leaders talk about how they're going to work with their building instructional leadership teams to make adjustments that might be needed in order for them to be more confident in where student achievement will be by the end of the year. And then this will be part, and is always part, of the end of the year meetings that I have with administrators. And then the last two, the collaborative learning teams, that's the work that our teachers, our certified staff do in their learning teams to set goals and to then work collaboratively around their professional goals and student learning goals. And then again, as we close this loop, and it's never closed because it's constant, but really that goal of students owning their own learning and setting their goals and being a huge player in how they learn and demonstrating their learning outcomes is the goal of where we hope to continue to evolve. So that's just a reminder of the end of the year information. You also then will have an opportunity to take a look at and be reminded of my job description and the duties and the roles and the responsibilities that I'm responsible for. I've done a reflection in each of the seven categories and you'll get a chance to read that, to be reminded of that and to assess me on that. You know, one of the things that's really important to me is weekly to provide information to you. So I tried to minimize a little bit of my reflection this year in some of those areas. I'm happy to take any questions and as I said, you'll get information this evening to continue this process.
Questions or comments? Okay, I will just point out a few things. Do not leave tonight until you stop on your way out to pick up the packet of materials for Dr. Stallow. I appreciate the amount of time that goes into that every year. You do provide us ongoing information, both at meetings and in the weekly updates. However, I know you also put extra care and attention in giving us a packet of materials to refer to when going through the evaluation process, so make sure you have those. Tomorrow, we will get a link to the survey and be mindful of the survey close date on May 6 because once they are closed, there's no reopening the survey. So just a reminder to everybody there. And then you can see in your board packet as outlined how the schedule will go from that point forward for the evaluation. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And there's only one link, correct?
There's only one link this time, so if you're used to two, this time there will be one link. So, okay. We are on to board governance and policy, so we have two new policy reviews, or two policies up for review for the first time. Both of those are being presented to us by Assistant Director of Student Services Melissa Canal.
All right, so I believe you have, you've received these in advance with the changes recommended.
We did.
Are there any questions based on those recommendations?
Questions or comments?
I guess, I just have a question.
Go ahead, Stacy, I'm sorry.
Just, you know, on the kindergarten early entrance, I see that the age, reaching the age of five, between the ages, we've took, we've taken that out?
So the date range there, if they've, between this, so essentially, we're just saying the date is arbitrary. If we look at most policies and that, it's sort of an arbitrary date to sort of get a benchmark. Essentially, we're saying if your child isn't going to be five by the time it starts school, you're open to-
Instead of limit-
Instead of limiting it within that window. Yep.
All right, so it's open, it's opening it up to more, more kids for more opportunities. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because I know I've gotten feedback on that a little bit.
I have the same question. So we're saying that the child no longer has to be five by the age, by October 15 of that year, of that academic year, but they have to be five by the beginning of the year and then if this parent still wants them to be early admitted.
No.
So that's what I'm trying to understand because that's why I'm reading it and then-
They don't have to be five prior to the beginning of that school year to seek early entrance. Will not be five.
It's just, it's taking the restriction off that you have to have your birthday between that period.
No, no, I, I get that.
So it's opening it up for more kids.
So it says instead of being five, basically, if you take out the first date by October 15, if you're not five by the beginning of the school year of requested enrollment, you may be considered under the following procedures. And then basically, parents inform, but also is the student automatically assessed for the ability, if they're not five by the beginning of the school year? Is that, so the parent says, I want them to come even though they're not going to be five by September 2 or whatever the first day of this school year is? And then automatically, the student gets assessed or how does that actually work?
Well, in our process, a parent, their first contact is the elementary principal and there's usually some conversation around that, like what, what are you, why, why are you entertaining early enrollment? And we talk through the process so parents are aware of what the expectation is, as well as what the, you know, when we're reviewing those results, what we'd be looking for. So yes, a child must be evaluated in order to qualify, but that doesn't necessarily mean by asking about early entrance decay and having that conversation around these procedures that we would automatically, if the parent just says, we want to do this, would we do that? Does that make sense?
That's what I was trying to understand.
There's usually some conversation that happens prior to that.
So the conversation happens and then who determines if the child is assessed?
The parent would request, then say, we want to continue moving forward with the process. We'd like our child assessed.
Okay, so, so what I'm trying to understand is if there's a child that turns, let's say, five, let's say, November 1,
Yep.
and the parent says to the principal, I want my child in this year's kindergarten. And so therefore, the child will be assessed. If the parent says, no, I don't want to go through assessment, do they not get in?
Correct. They would have to.
So no matter what, if they're not five by the beginning of the school year versus October 15, they are going to be assessed.
Yeah.
Assessed. Okay. If the child, if this child's still in the assessment. That's all I was trying to understand from this because let's face it, we're reading a document where half the sentence is crossed off, all this kind of stuff, and I'm trying to understand the flow of it. Now, you know, I know I've received some emails. I don't know if everyone has read the same ones or whatever, but over the years, there's been parents saying, well, I think my child is more than capable, yet the school said no, all this kind of stuff. How does that work? How does that work if the assessment comes back borderline or not and the school recommends the student does not get in that school year?
So we do have in our process where a parent could appeal a decision. So that decision comes through the elementary principal, working with the parent and typically myself. I'm the designee in this, or I have been. So we'd be, we'd be reviewing that and working in consultation with each other. We, you know, really rely heavily on those results of those assessments to guide that decision-making and those sometimes observations of a kindergartner. We really want to set students up for success, so it really is about making sure that is a, the student is going to benefit from that placement. And so very rarely, in my experience, having worked on this process with families over the last six years, do we have a family who doesn't understand why a decision was made in the end. But if they, if they still have that ask, then it can be reviewed again by the Director of Teaching and Learning. Previously, it was the Assistant Superintendent, but we can elevate that for additional review.
Okay. Does the assessment cost money?
So in our previous process, the assessment, we did not, as a district, assess a fee for that. We would provide a recommended, a school psychologist. Families could also seek an independent school, you know, psychology evaluation. We would accept those results from any other provider. The psychologist that we would refer to, which was very standard cost, having done this over time, would cost families about $250 to engage in that, just that assessment. And so one of our goals, again, with making this a little bit more equitable, is to remove that as a barrier for families should they not be able to afford that. So in making those adjustments to the policy, now the cost is only to cover, we're moving that as internally, as a district, we can provide that as a service, and it's only to cover the cost of the actual assessment. So it'll be around $80 at currently market value of the assessment in time, about $80 compared to 250.
So we'll be using our own staff?
Yes, we'll be using our own staff.
Okay.
Other comments or questions on that policy?
I have one more question.
I'm going to let Jonathan go first.
Oh, I was just going to say, using our own staff and still allowing if they want to use an outside resources.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, they'd still be able to do that.
Okay. Anybody else before we go back to Mary? Okay, Mary?
Well, I guess my, my general question is, is there's a lot of kids that are born between September 1 and October 15. And I'm just wondering, was, and I understand it's just easier to say by the beginning of the school year, but that month and a half, I mean, is there that much of a difference between the cognitive abilities of these kids in that month and a half that would then require that testing for that little a time? I don't think there's an age attached to any of it. No, it's if you're not five by the beginning of the school year, then you go through that process. And where, I'm, you know, there's a, the reason why my question is- And it used to be by October 15, you'd have to be five.
Right. And now it's the beginning of the school year, so it's a-
Well, now it's, now it's nothing. Now it's-
You can be turned just four, by the day of.
Five in February.
This is less restrictive.
Yeah, this is, does that make sense?
We're saying you don't, you don't, there is no September. There's no like, you have to be turning five in those six weeks. No, it doesn't matter. You could have your birthday in March and you want to go.
I, I get that, but all I'm saying is, is that it went from children who will not be five prior to the beginning of the school year, from children who technically would not be five by October 15. And now it's saying children who won't be five-
At all.
At all, like-
Like anybody.
No, February 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get that. I'm just wondering, that month and a half, is that going to increase the number of assessments that we have?
Might.
Yeah.
Yeah, might.
Oh, yeah, more people. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think-
Regardless of where you set the deadline and where you set the benchmark, you are going to have students that fall six weeks on either side of it, wherever you, wherever you put that.
This is just giving them more opportunity.
If we open it up, it'll probably increase.
Yeah. I mean, there could be somebody that's much younger. Try.
And on a typical year, I can share that we have maybe five to six inquiries out of-
Okay.
Local classes between 600 and 700 students.
Helpful context.
And, and-
Very helpful.
Okay, if we're done with that one. Oh, I'm sorry, Enrique, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, what was the motivation behind increasing the result of the IQ test from 121 to 130?
Yeah. So looking at that and kind of also comparing that to other examples of policies, but really, a 121 is, when we look at a scale of IQ, a 121 is just above high average. And so a 130 really does put that student in a place where they would be potentially an outlier among their peers. So that would be more reason to make sure they're included, you know, they have an opportunity to be in a educational environment that would be cognitively challenging at the level of which they're capable of learning, where a 121 isn't really necessarily an outlier among their peers, potentially.
Thank you.
Okay, how about on the other policy while we still have her here? Policy 513, curriculum acceleration. Were there any questions or comments?
There's any change? There's no changes to this?
Yep, just some job titles.
Job title to update it with our current org chart.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here and for presenting these tonight. Appreciate it. All right, there are no first reading of policies this evening and then we have a second reading of policies, which means that these will be coming forward for a vote at the next business meeting. Those are policy 407.1, 409, and 620. Was there any further comments or questions on those?
The only question that I had, because this came up in a couple of my speaking with people in the community, with regards to the credit, and this has nothing to do with the policy, the credit for learning, do we keep a standard comparison for PSEO credits to high school equivalency? Or is that still dependent upon the class or do we maintain that for the PSEO kids on an ongoing basis? So in other words, if they decide to take English 101 at Normandale and not here, is there a standard comparison other than the average so many hours per credit?
I'll have to get, we'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure.
Since that's not in the policy and you could also perhaps email Dr. Edwards and copy Dr. Stallow.
Right. I said it wasn't in the policy when I asked the question. I was just curious.
I realize. Just because it wasn't on the agenda, we don't have anyone prepared to answer, so.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Nothing else on those policies? Right, superintendent relations?
Nope. You've gone through the evaluation process. I think that's it for the evening.
Well, and I understand you had some interviews going on.
Well, that's what I wanted to, under the informational items.
I'm sorry, you do have any informational items?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to update the board. I believe I referenced this in my weekly update to you, but Wanda, again, reiterate, just the absolute excellent pool of administrative candidates that we've had, both for the assistant principal positions at Prior Lake High School, as well as the candidates for the Hamilton Ridge position. And as you, as you know, we did hire two candidates for the Prior Lake High School assistant principal position. Unfortunately, we're losing one of our APs and it worked out really well for us that we had two, three excellent finalists and two that we decided to offer positions for, so pending your approval. so pending your approval, that will be the case. And then today, we had the first round of interviews for the Hamilton Ridge elementary principal. Normally, for a stakeholder interview process, we bring in about six candidates, five to six candidates. We could not get lower than eight. So we had eight candidates today, and we have a task in front of us now to determine who will be invited back for that second round, but really excellent candidates. You know, our first question is always, tell us a little bit about yourself and why are you interested in a position with Prior Lake Savage Area Schools? And I just want to state this because I think it's a tribute to you as a board, to our entire administrative teaching and support team that we have across the district, is that people give very specific examples of why they want to join us. And we mentioned earlier, some of the East M, but the other two things that I heard multiple times today was the innovative work that we do and the equity work in which we're engaged. People reference, they know that we had, you know, some difficult situations to deal with this year, and they want to be a part of our work and our commitment and your commitment as a board to ensuring that that work continues so every student gets what they need to reach their full potential. So just want to share that with you, and we do have those second round interviews happening on Thursday.
Great, thank you.
So I will update you over the weekend if if I'm able to update you on anything.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's nobody signed up for the public forum this evening, so before I adjourn, I will just make sure to remind you to get your materials on the way out for the evaluation. Thank you, board, for a long day of work and help with both interviews and the meeting this evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.